Okay, I'd like to call the order of the regular city council meeting of Sparks, Nevada on 128, 2013 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here.
And city clerk Gardner, here, we have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation we have with us today, Pastor Pete Bossler with the Cross Winds Assembly of God, welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Well, that's great. Lord, nobody has enough wisdom to operate this city, to manage this city, to expand it, to grow it, to prosper it, but you do. And so you said, "Ask and we'll receive," and we ask right now that you would give great wisdom to the mayor and the city council, protect us, Lord, with the fire department and the police department and all those in authority over us, we just pray your blessing on them. Bless this city, give us your divine favor, and we ask all this in your mighty name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor, for those kind words. Do you all remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Schmidt, will you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I do have two cards for people to speak. If you want to speak under comments to the public, please fill out one of these cards. I have Kevin Dick. Did I pronounce that right or not?
Yes.
Okay, good. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the council. I'm here this afternoon to follow up on the Energy Fit Nevada resolution that you signed at the end of October promoting Energy Fit Nevada Day and home energy upgrades. During that event, we announced the kickoff of the wintertime rebate special through a grant from the Department of Energy to the Nevada State Office of Energy, and I should note, I've got Bob Conrad with the State Office of Energy here with me also today. We had a special promotion for people to be able to get low-cost energy assessments on their homes and qualify for rebate dollars for home energy upgrades. And I wanted to report that we were able to conduct 128 energy assessments during the time period before the end of December, and we had 100 people take advantage of upgrades to improve the energy efficiency of their home. We, to date, have 45 of those upgrades completed. 22 of them are in northern Nevada so far, 2 of those are in the city of Sparks, but we have an additional 55 upgrades that are to be completed by the end of March. And of those, the vast majority are in northern Nevada. I don't have the breakout yet as to what those locations will be, but we'll report back to you. But the good news is that we're continuing the special $199 energy assessment, so that's a discounted assessment available to homeowners because of the grant fundings available from DOE. And if people still decide to go forward into the future with an energy upgrade for their home, they're eligible for a $500 rebate if they save 15% energy savings out of their home, or 1,000 if they exceed 20%. So we appreciate all the support that we got from the city of Sparks. We did have good response to the publicity that we had with the city council proclamation, and I hope I can report additional homes in Sparks being upgraded in the future.
Great, thank you Kevin. Can people call someone, is there a number they can call if they want to say that?
The best thing for them to do is to go to the Energy Fit Nevada website, energiefitnevada.org, and they can submit their information that way and be set up with one of our pre-screened partners to be able to be scheduled for an assessment.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you so much for reporting back, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or anything? Go ahead, Julia.
Just want to thank Kevin for his leadership at the health district in pushing this program forward.
Thanks. Ron King is next. Come on down, sir. Did we get the microphone for him all right?
Well, I can probably reach this one if I push this chair out of the way. Good afternoon. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you all for your service to the city. I appreciate it. I know that a lot of people don't, they're very belligerent in their contact with you, but I want you all to know that I appreciate every single last one of you. I'd also like to state that I appreciate how you've responded to my concerns on ADA regulations and concerns within the city. Recently, you just completed a project over by where Big Lots is to install new curb cuts where there weren't curb cuts before, and I appreciate your rapid response on that. What I'd like to comment on today was that in looking for other ways to approach the city for commenting on ADA issues, I noticed that there was an advisory committee for the disabled, but it's been suspended. And I'd like to request that it be reinstated, and if need be, I'd be willing to serve on that committee as well. So that's basically all I came to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks Ron, and it was suspended, I think, because there was, we couldn't find anybody that wanted to serve, so, you know, maybe in the future, we can put it back out there and see if we can get some, somebody to serve. Mr. Lawson.
Exactly, it was suspended just for that reason. The participation level was down to minimal to zero.
Right. Was there a quorum issue?
Yes.
Is there a requirement for a quorum?
Well, anytime you have an open meeting, yes, you have to have that. So it's just, at that particular time, it made the most sense to suspend it and bring it back, but I'm definitely interested in bringing it back if we have the participation level.
I could see if some of my fellow disabled people that I know would be willing to serve.
That's our target audience.
I'll see if I can find people to serve.
And you can contact me through the city.
Okay.
And they will give you my cellphone, and if that makes sense, we'll start her back up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks Ron, for coming down today, we appreciate it. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order or pull any items? Not looking for a motion? I don't think the screen's working, so jump in.
Presenting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. So I'll see if it's working next time. Next is consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of January 14, 2013. Any omissions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes of January 14, 2013. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, next is 4.1, proclamation, Save a Heart Day. Is someone here to accept this?
Yes.
Come on down, I'll read it and then I'll present it to you. And have you say a few words, you can have a seat right there if you want. Okay, city of Sparks proclamation, whereas heart disease affects men, women, and children of every age and race in the United States and continues to be the leading cause of death in America, and whereas approximately 295,000 emergency medical services treated out of hospital cardiac arrests occur annually nationwide, roughly 92% of sudden cardiac arrest victims die before being discharged from a hospital. Sudden cardiac arrest results from an abnormal heart rhythm in most adults, often ventricular fibrillation, easy for me to say. Unfortunately, only 31.4% out of hospital cardiac arrest victims receive bystander cardiopulmonary resuscitation, CPR. Whereas the REMSA Center for Pre-Hospital Education has dedicated itself to quality education that prepares our community to provide life-saving skills, including CPR. REMSA has trained more than 15,000 individuals in northern Nevada in the past year how to conduct proper CPR techniques in order to save lives. Whereas prompt delivery of CPR more than doubles the victim's chances of survival by helping it to maintain vital blood flow to the heart and brain, increasing the amount of time in which an electric shock from a defibrillator may be effective. Whereas an automated external defibrillator, AED, even when used by a bystander, is safe, easy to operate, and if used immediately after the onset of sudden cardiac arrest, highly effective in the terminating ventricular fibrillation, so that the heart can resume a normal, effective rhythm. Whereas for every minute without bystander CPR, survival from witnessed cardiac arrest decreases 7 to 10%. The interval between the 9/11 telephone call and the arrival of emergency medical services personnel is usually longer than five minutes. Therefore, a cardiac arrest victim's survival is likely to depend on a public-trained CPR and AED use and access to life-saving devices. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim February 9, 2013, Save a Heart Day in and for the city of Sparks, Nevada, and urge all citizens to show their support for life-saving education in the fight against sudden cardiac arrest, and commemorate this day by taking time to learn the life-saving skills of CPR. By increasing awareness of importance of CPR and the use of AED units to reduce death and disability from cardiovascular disease, we can save thousands of lives each year.
My name is JW Hodge, I'm the public, or the education manager for REMSA, and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize the importance of cardiovascular awareness and hope to see everyone there and come out and learn free CPR.
Thanks. Any questions or comments?
I just can't say the date.
February 9.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
At Shields and Sparks, there's a Running Red for Heart Run in the morning to get people out and be active and get cardiovascular awareness that way. And then from 10 to 2 PM at Shields, there's a health fair and expo, as well as free CPR classes for the community to learn the awareness of CPR and how to be heart healthy.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. Okay, next is 4.2, presentation of the Sparks Museum and Cultural Center Annual Report. Anthea, welcome.
I don't know, how do I get that started? I guess. Does anybody, I'm not really good at this, I'm not sure how to make it just be a full screen, or should I just leave it? Over here? There.
There you go, you got it.
Uh-oh.
Over.
There we go. I know that the document that I turned in didn't scan very well, and I lost the original, so I couldn't turn in the digital, so if anybody wants a readable, legible copy of the annual report, I've got them here.
Anyway, Anthea Humphries, Sparks Heritage Museum.
The sense of community that emanates from the Sparks Museum began over 80 years ago when the building first opened in 1932 to serve the community as a library. I've lived all over the world and been involved with all sorts of different organizations, and the commitment, dedication, and enthusiasm of the volunteers at the museum never ceases to amaze me. After opening the upstairs cultural center in November 2011, we hit the ground running and have had one event and function after another. Although there's been substantially increased activity at the museum, the volunteers haven't missed a stride. They just stepped up the pace and worked harder and longer to keep things rolling along smoothly. To give you an example, this past spring, the museum used the cultural center to complement the Celtic Heritage exhibit with performances by Irish dancers and Scottish musicians. In addition, a special exhibit and dome program for the 100th anniversary of the Titanic was complemented with an educational series about the music, dress, and dance of the period. In April 2012, museum attendance for that one month alone was approximately equivalent to 25% of the previous year's overall total. The future potential of the facility is quickly becoming apparent. The list of events and activities over the past year is lengthy and speaks for itself. One of the main goals at the museum is education, and we're happy to report a dramatic increase in the participation by young people this past year. We partnered with the Silver State Young Chautauqua to offer an educational program promoting the study of history among youth. We also worked with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts of America and the Challenger Learning Center to bring the community new exhibits. As always, we have continued to offer free school tours to introduce the young people of Sparks and the Truckee Meadows to their history and heritage in an effort to continue to foster the sense of pride and community that is so prevalent here. Our research materials grew significantly this year, thanks to the donation of what is reported to be one of the largest known private collections of railroad books in the US. Sadly, this collection is going to sit in storage until we are able to raise funds for the infrastructure that is needed to make it more readily accessible to the public. This year, a much-needed donation came from Washoe County, eight newer computers and monitors. This, together with a $4,000 grant from the State Historic Records Advisory Board, the museum has been able to further our photodigitization project significantly, and an online exhibit will be a reality within the next few weeks. That's something we've been working towards for quite a few years now. Thanks to a grant from Nevada Humanities, a historic walking tour downloadable app is currently being worked on and is expected to be completed by April. Although the core of the Sparks Museum's mission is the preservation of Sparks and Truckee Meadows' history, an auxiliary role the museum plays is providing a tourism attraction in our fine city. When I first started at the museum in 2007, before the train was restored and the cultural center completed, the annual visitation at the museum facility was 2,595 people. So, whoops, let me go back. So, I mean, just at the train alone this last year, we've had more people go through than we had through the entire facility in 2007. Anyway, I went back into our records, and this figure, the 2,595 people, included facility rentals, school tours, admissions, you know, basically everybody who walked through that door for any reason. From December 2011 to the end of November 2012, the Sparks Museum and cultural center, including the train, had approximately 8,000 visitors this year. According to the museum's visitor register, this year, we once again saw another increase in out-of-area visitors. 51% of the people who signed the register were from outside the Reno-Sparks area compared to 42% in 2012. I would personally like to thank all the volunteers who put in thousands of hours of unpaid time to act as ambassadors for Sparks, welcoming tourists who come from all over the United States and from around the world to our little museum for one reason or another. Now, on to the finances. Bearing in mind that our fiscal year runs from July to June, and the numbers that I just quoted you are actually for the calendar year, bearing in mind that our fiscal year runs from July to June, after which we have continued to see increases, it is encouraging to see that admissions revenue for fiscal year 2011, 2012 increased by 52%. The spirit of the community is truly alive and growing, and membership dues increased by 22%. With the increased facility usage, we have also seen a rise in gift shop revenues. Although the museum is moving forward in leaps and bounds, and we are closing the gap in our operating deficit, we sadly are still running at a loss. It is expected that the upward trend in admission will continue as the museum expands their offering, and that as word of mouth spreads, increased facility rentals will have a positive impact and close the gap even further. There are a few of the, these are a few of the activities we have planned for the first half of 2013, which have passed already. There will be, there will be activities in the cultural center to complement the Timeless Treasures exhibit. February 1 is actually going to be a soft opening, and we will be doing an official grand opening in the middle of the month. In an effort to continue to generate increased traffic at the museum and to further enhance the tourism appeal of Victorian Square, we plan to host a bigger and better Western Heritage Festival on May 10 and 11. The evening of the 10th, there'll be pre-festival activities. We also plan to have a Nevada Arts Council exhibit at the museum for Art Town. And, you know, as the year progresses, there'll be more. This is what we've got planned at the moment. Thanks to this incredible group of people, only a few of whom are pictured here, and sadly, one of whom has passed away since I actually put this together. Edith Sunny Mensor, one of the founding members of the museum, passed away last week. She was on the board for 28 years. This last year has actually been a really hard year. We've lost quite a lot of our long, long-time supporters, so that increase in membership has really helped. Those are all new people that are getting involved, which is a good thing. Anyway, all of these people are working together to do what they can with limited resources to preserve Sparks heritage, to educate our youth, and to welcome visitors and new residents to our community. Thank you volunteers, and thank you to the city for your continued support with our endeavors. Short and sweet, I tried to make it short and sweet.
Go ahead, Julia.
Just a comment, I just want to commend Anthea and the board of directors of the museum. I mean, it's in the data, but it's also, you can just tell, the level of activity at the museum has significantly increased, the quality of the offerings has significantly increased, and I just think that the sky's the limit. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I know it's tough to close the gap in this economy for small nonprofits, but I think you're on the right track, and congratulations.
Yeah, I echo that same, Anthea, it's never been better over there. I mean, it's really kind of a gem that not enough people know about, it's just a beautiful little place there, it's wonderful. If you go through it, the exhibits are great, and you have done a great job, along with all of your volunteers, they are so passionate about that place, it just, it's just a really, it's a good thing for a small town like Sparks to have a museum like that, and it's a wonderful place, and I appreciate all the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know how to get out of here, but, there we go.
Thanks, Anthea. Okay, next is 4.3, update on air service at Reno-Tahoe International Airport. Mr. Mayberry and company.
Good morning.
Morning, how are you? Afternoon, yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Manager Adam Mayberry. I'm your community relations manager, I'm also your trustee on the airport authority board, one of them, and appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve. A couple announcements before I introduce Brian. The board is underway in a national search to replace the current CEO. We hope to have a new CEO for the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority sometime in June-July timeframe. Certainly, if you have any prospective candidates that you have in mind, feel free to talk to me, and I'll give you the contact of the search firm. Secondly, as you know, the checkpoint project is continuing to go very smoothly, a lot of construction out at the airport, consulting the checkpoint on the lower level, it's a month ahead of schedule, so we hope to have that open by the end of March. And the airport's also underway, the board is on a pretty comprehensive strategic planning process, and we'll be reaching out to you in short order, and the result would be a roadmap that we would give the new CEO of a series of priorities adopted by the board, so look for that. And also, you have a standing invitation for any airport tours or individual meetings on air service or anything that may be on your mind relating to the airport authority. With me to my right is Brian Pratt. Brian is the Director of Air Service and Air Cargo Development. He's been with the airport for eight years, he's going to give us a summary on air service and what's happening. As you know, there's a lot of turmoil in the airline industry today. All airports across the country are experiencing some significant challenges, a decrease in air service. In fact, Las Vegas McCarran Airport just last week provided an incentive package to airlines, and that's the first time that that airport has ever done that. Mostly, large airports, major airports often are in a position, don't have to offer incentives. And so, when we see that at the level of Las Vegas, that tells us that there are some alarms out there. But we're doing everything we can to maintain and bring in new air service, and Brian will go through this, I've asked him to be fairly quick, I know you've had a busy morning and another presentation behind you, so without further ado, I'll introduce Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Brian Pratt, Director of Air Service and Cargo Development for the Airport Authority. And I'll just kind of jump right into it, really with an industry overview, what's happening at the high level all across the US, and then kind of bring it home a little bit, a little bit closer. Really kind of looking at the US airline industry and what they are focusing on right now, and you probably have all seen it, number one is debt reduction. There's not an airline, other than Southwest and probably JetBlue at this point in time, that has not gone into bankruptcy. They are all trying to eliminate that debt, but also renew their fleets, get rid of the old fuel-guzzling planes, and try to get something a little bit more efficient in there. And believe it or not, enhance their products. You know, they want to compete on a global basis as they expand onto these international markets. But I think what's really important about this slide is looking at that graph and looking at what's happened since June 2007, you know, right before the recession really hit and the peak of air travel at that point in time, and the number of scheduled departures through the middle of last year. And you'll see that the medium and non-hub airports were hit by far the hardest. Reno-Tahoe International Airport, by FAA standards, is classified as a medium hub, even though we're a small city according to them. So as you can see, we were hit probably the heaviest out of anybody else, unlike the large hub airports and the major hubs, whichever the airlines just focused on. From 2001 to 2010, the US airlines lost a combined total of $63 billion. Not one airline, other than, again, like Southwest, made any bit of profit. Believe it or not, they actually want to make a profit nowadays. It's not all about the number of dots on the map and the loyalty program, but it's about actually making a dollar. And so, in 2011, you see, they earned just a little over half a billion dollars. What that equates to on a per employment basis, so each person that gets onto an aircraft, is in 2011, they made 77 cents on you. Every time you flew, they made less than a dollar. 2012, so far, we're looking at about 50 cents. I really enjoy this slide because it really tells a fitting tale. From 2000 till current, we went from about 11 major airlines to what might be four. Of all the airlines that have now merged between Delta Northwest, United Continental, Southwest Airtran, and of course, what's on the news right now is American and US Airways. Rumors have it that they expect to know something by next week, perhaps the week after as well. Of course, you still have a couple others out there like JetBlue, Spirit as well. Right now, though, we still do have a great portfolio of air service. We've got 54 daily departures to 16 non-stop destinations, and of course, we continue to work actively with not only our current airlines, but future potential partners as well to get new service in. Last year alone, believe it or not, we had over 75 meetings, one-on-one meetings with individual airlines, passenger airlines, cargo airlines, as well as freight forwarders, which is part of the whole cargo process. Fortunately, this doesn't mean I'm on the road all the time, I promise you. We've seen a dynamic shift of what's happened over the last few years of, instead of just going to headquarters and having a headquarter meeting with an airline, when you have over 400 commercial airports all vying for that same service, that same level of service, airlines just simply don't have enough time to meet with every airport. So what they've really focused on are these air service conferences, where you basically have pre-arranged one-on-one meetings, all sit there for two or three days and have up to 15 meetings with various airlines. And, you know, that conference or wherever kind of moves across the country or wherever else. We've found that's the most, the best way to get in front of our partners, you know, not only once, but more than once. We can follow up with them time and time again. And we've actually had some very good success, hopefully some other success, knock on wood, coming in the near future, that we should be able to tell you about in the future. We're very fortunate, for a community our size, you know, less than a half million people, if you will, by population, we've got significant and fantastic air service. When you look at other communities that are in the same population range, look at the number of departures and, you know, destinations they have, and while a couple might have similar number of destinations, if you look at that second to the right column, seats, none of them have the number of of seats, none of them have the number of seats that we have in this market. Most of those other markets are served by small regional jets. That's going to be a concern for them as airlines start to phase out those 50-seat regional jets, which are now just uneconomical. So, where are we so far through 2012? December numbers have not been finalized yet. Unfortunately, we, we saw a decline in passenger service, you know, passenger volumes for the entire year. But the, the good part is that, that gap started to narrow. We were in double digits beginning of the year and certainly came back down to, to single digits. So, we certainly anticipate 2013 to be a better year. Obviously, with some special events, we've had some good snow already, and hopefully we certainly hope to see that turn into some, some positive. Whereas on the for cargo, it's actually kind of the opposite. We started off a little, little soft with cargo, but we've seen positive growth ever since then. So, as you've evolved, seeing a number of, you know, distribution centers that have opened up in, in the region, as the economy starts to spool back up little by little, certainly online e-fulfillment type of programs certainly have helped as well. From time to time, we hear, you know, questions about airfare, and wanted to throw this data for, for your review. And I apologize, since I sent this in, the Bureau of Transportation Statistics has actually updated with third quarter data. But to give you an idea, the average domestic airfare in the U.S. is $385, and Reno is $346, so significantly less. Out of the top 100, we're ranked 79th. So, again, we're not, by any standards, an expensive airport. See Las Vegas and Atlantic City at the bottom there, and there's a reason for those two are there. Number one, they both have service, significant service by two carriers, Spirit Airlines and Allegiant. Both of those airlines sell very, very discounted airfare tickets, but are very reliant on the ancillary costs and packages they can say, they can sell as well. We've had good news, believe it or not, even though we've seen some reductions in, in flights and passengers. Houston Service will return with United Airlines in March. San Jose, even though it was discontinued with Southwest Airlines, we're very fortunate to have our partners Alaska jump right in about four months afterwards and started that in June of 2012. Ontario, California also started earlier this month with Southwest Airlines with single daily departure. And then Las Vegas, while we can't encourage airlines to lower their fares, we can certainly encourage airlines to bring in competition, and Allegiant Airlines will offer twice-weekly non-stop service starting February 1. You can see the target markets, certainly looking at Southern California still. Washington, D.C. is always one of those ones that we're trying to keep our finger on the pulse, as well as a couple other and some of the airline partners that we're looking at as well. And with that, I'll certainly take any questions or comments.
Questions, comments for Brian. Okay. Thanks. Where you been hiding all these eight years? This is the first time we've ever seen you. You've been here, you have not been here before, have you?
I, I have not. I have not. I think generally they send Brian Culpen, our, you know, Director of Marketing and Public Affairs. The unfortunate part is, part of my job is, is on the road, so, you know, they, they keep me, keep me busy, let's put it that way.
You've got to stop and smell the roses sometimes, you know?
I know.
Okay. Just checking.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate the update. Thanks, Brian. Okay, consent items 5-1 and 5-2. Anybody want to pull a consent item?
[inaudible]
Okay. I bet you were just sitting out there to watch what was going on, Mike. Okay, next is Edon presentation. Mike Kazmersky, please come on down, I'm sorry. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Mayor? Let's see, do I do this? I guess so. Here we go. Mike Kazmersky with Edon. First, I'd like to just start by thanking the mayor, the council, and really the city of Sparks for being so aggressively supportive of economic development, working with the team here led by Sean Carey and Armando and others, Neil and the, the whole crew here. I can tell you that when we have a prospect, that we have things that need to be done, the, the staff here, the team here, top-down rallies to grow, to, to sell this community, and, and it's, makes our job a whole lot easier, and our success rate is reflective of that kind of teamwork. So, special thanks for that kind of support. You kind of figured out what Edon's all about, but I'll run, so I'll run through this pretty quick, but if it doesn't have the word "job" or "jobs" in it somewhere, we're not really going to put much resource or energy behind it. We are focused singularly on that one objective in three main areas, attract, retain, and grow, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on that as we go forward. But it's not just the job, it's the primary job. And to be clear, the primary job drives our economy. Those jobs where the majority of the customers are somewhere else, now Foods or Microsoft, versus a, a barber shop or a, you know, retail organization that ends up moving the money around the community, still very important, still hires a lot of people, but if we can get primary jobs that come to the community or grow in the community, it drives all the economic activity. It actually creates half the jobs, directly creates half the jobs. And when we bring a company in, sometimes people say, "Well, you're bringing in those Californians," or "You're bringing in this, you're bringing in that," and the reality is, we're just bringing in jobs. It's too expensive to move people. The jobs we announce, 90%, actually 93% of those jobs are filled by people already in the community. So, we're meeting our needs, especially when it comes to the, the unemployment rate. For those of you who've heard my presentation, I apologize because you've seen some of this before, Ed and others. This is my favorite chart. It tells you how bad it really is. When we talk about recovery and how things are going, we forget that half the people that lost their job five years ago have not gotten any job back, and that's a pretty significant, that's a national number. Our numbers are even worse. So, you look at this and go, in the history, in our lifetime, all those recessions reflected on that chart, were deeper and were longer, and we still are only halfway back. So, it's not easygoing by any means, but we're making progress. If you look at our unemployment rate in this region, a pretty good move in the right direction, still a long way to go to get to that red line there, a 5% average, but are clearly a move in the right direction. As we moved to continue that reduction in unemployment, we had basically focused in three areas, attracting, retaining, and entrepreneurial growth. On the attraction side, our goal is 2,000 new primary jobs. If we can bring in 2,000 new primary jobs in a year, we have somewhere around 3,500 new jobs to the region, and it won't take us long, a couple of years, to get our unemployment rate down below that 5% number. We focus on target industries, high-growth companies, headquarters, areas that we really hadn't focused on in other, in years past. When we talk target industries, areas that have the greatest chance of traction here, logistics, which many have landed here in Sparks, and manufacturing, and you've gotten a couple of those manufacturing prospects as well. We have an incredible vocational advantage, and really, it's a team effort on the, on the community engagement side. Some new initiatives since, since we talked about a year ago, we're really more, continue that aggressive visit. In fact, Stan Thomas is on the road today in San Jose, talking to consultants and actually many companies that are looking at relocation to this region. We sent out 25,000-plus postcards to high-growth companies. We're following phone calls now. That campaign has, has produced many leads and a tremendous improvement on our website. We have about a 75% improvement in hits on our website, which has been totally redone. So, there's a lot of good activity coming. We're moving to get more prospects and more visits. The discovery campaign signs is something we have not rolled out yet, but it's, we are working to help people understand what a great place this is for business. A lot of people flowing through the airport, the convention center, not just visitors, but, but people in the community now are legislators. If we can help them understand what a great place for businesses is through, through marketing in those airport and in the convention center, we believe it'll drive the lead numbers up. If you look back over a year ago, the highlighted in yellow-red are those companies we worked with that landed here in Sparks, the highest number of assisted projects we've had in quite some time. And so far this fiscal year, which starts with the 1st of July, you can see we had a couple of announcements, logistics based here in Sparks as well, those highlighted in red. So, we're making progress, and the projects are landing, and you certainly are. This region is certainly an important part of our product as we sell this region. Our goal as an organization on the attraction side, if you look back to the five-year average, last year's numbers, and where we are this far year-to-date, we've got a ways to go in our goal. Another 1,500 jobs we need to land by the end of June. We think we have a great shot at that. As you look at our hot prospects, notice the hot prospects are from all over. A lot of people think they're just coming from California, but really, we have a, a pretty aggressive campaign nationally, especially when it comes to logistics and distribution, and it's a national campaign that has prospects and activity from across the country. We look at the pipeline, and the goal is to keep our targets and suspects up so that we can get the prospects, the people that visit, the proposals, the people that are starting to really look at getting serious, and then the wins, nine so far this year. The pipeline is, is full. If you look at where these prospects are, manufacturing is really the largest player, and that's not a surprise. We have put a tremendous effort in marketing this region as a great place for manufacturing. We have the workforce, we have the facilities, we have the opportunity here, and we're seeing a lot of energy and opportunity there, interest there, especially from California. The data centers are a little bit of a surprise. 12 data center projects we're working with now, a year ago we had none. And you, you look at the Apple deal, a lot of people say, you know, the incentive piece, but because Apple put a data center here, a lot of other people are interested to do the same. So, there are a lot of advantages to the Apple announcement beyond just, you know, the jobs that go with Apple. And then back office support, the good news about those, they tend to be, they tend to be larger numbers, as many as 600. In fact, we have an announcement in that area that'll probably hit, I would expect, in the next few weeks. That's a 600-job prospect in the final phases. So, that would be some good news, certainly, for those people looking for jobs. This chart is probably the one that tells the, the story the most. If you look back to the last part of last year, we were averaging three to four visits a month, and that's a company serious about relocation, coming here to visit what we, see what we have. That number's now up to 10, 11, 12. Will probably beat 12 this month of January, which is an incredible doubling, almost tripling of the number of visits. It's about killing the staff, by the way, because each visit takes a couple of days and a lot of energy and time, but we get them to visit. We make the case for this region. When, if they make a decision, our numbers over the past year, year and a half, or 80% of the time, they select Northern Nevada. So, a pretty impressive selection number. If you look at these prospect visits, that'll probably drop a little bit over the next year, but even a 50% to 60% to 70% success rate would be huge from an announcement perspective. So, we see really good, really good energy in the pipeline. And these are some of the likely announcements going forward. We do track headquarters special because when you get a headquarters in here, you get a lot more than just jobs or regional office. You get executives, you get investment, you get a lot more on the headquarters side, and, and our headquarters numbers are dramatically up from where they were the last couple of years. So, that's really the attraction side. Retention, and, and we talked about this at the retreat, retention is extremely important. Keep what we have and help them grow. It doesn't do us much good to bring in 2,000 jobs, we lose 3,000. Keep the companies here, help them grow, help them be successful, and, and certainly there's a lot of work going on with Nancy McCormick leading the charge on that. We do find that companies in this region, especially high-growth, are being courted by other communities, so we've got to keep them here, we've got to help them grow here. Our visits so far, 134, 80% nearly are growing, and that's a real positive number. Tells us there's internal job creation happening. It'll help our, get, get our unemployment rate down even faster. Listed there are some of their major concerns, and, and a highlight there is your retention initiative, which, which is fantastic. Getting out and visiting your companies here in Sparks is, is extremely helpful, important, and we're, we're glad to work with you as you do that, and I know Nancy is working with the team, with the staff to make that happen. Think local, something that really is important. It helps the companies feel like people care and are working together. Part of the retention program is to connect companies, and it's amazing how one company is using someone in another state or another country, and there's somebody within the region that can provide that same service. So, as part of our retention effort, we're helping companies connect better so they can, in fact, use local suppliers in what they're doing. The last leg of economic development is entrepreneurial growth or entrepreneurial development, one that I, I would classify as the most important. You'll hear, if you get a chance to see the speaker at the, at the Chambers event next week, it's...
Directions.
Directions. I kept wanting to say discovery, and I know it wasn't it. Directions. He'll talk a little bit about this, but this really helps us prepare the ground for the companies of the future, and it's one we're putting a lot more energy into now. It really is part of our long-term job creation effort. We're making a lot of traction there. We have some goals in this area. The state has been very helpful. They've incorporated some of the things we're trying to do with what they're doing. We're actually trying to attract some of the entrepreneurial talent. Economic development generally attracts companies. This part of our program attracts people, single person. You need the right kind of system to attract that kind of person, but a serial entrepreneur can create thousands of jobs. So, we're making some progress in that area as well. That blue box there on the right is interesting because it's almost like a foreign language. It makes sense to the entrepreneurs. Those are things happening now that maybe weren't happening before, that are starting to get that entrepreneurial ecosystem to, to take off. And the fact that we had a TEDx last Friday, we have another TEDx coming up, those are events unique to entrepreneurs, we've never had before in this community, and it really is starting to get us on the radar, so it's pretty exciting. Just a special thanks again to you, the team here, and really for your support of the regional economic development effort. It is not, no one organization or no one person is going to make this happen. We're going to make this happen as a team. You're part of W N D D now, which is extremely important. The Western Nevada Development District is part of that whole working together as a team to grow the regional economy. And it is, it makes my job on the economic development side, attracting companies much better when they know the, the government entities, the organizations in this region are willing to work together to help make things better. Questions?
Questions for Mike. Anyone? Go ahead, Ed.
I can't pass up an opportunity to talk about economic development. I've been real impressed with Mike's leadership in the last year, and I've made that pretty public, and I'll make it public again, is that Edon has really moved the ball. He moved the dial on attracting jobs, and it's pretty exciting to go to the board meetings and, and see that continue month after month. And I'm seeing a lot more excitement in the community too, which is nice finally to see that, that being moved. So, thank you for that, and I really appreciate the, the work that you do, and keep it up. We're not there, got a long ways to go, but you're doing the right thing. And you mentioned W N D D, and, and we really look for big things with that partnership, you know, to act, give us access to federal dollars, along with Edon's access to state dollars. It looks very good for our region in the, the coming years, so it's good. It's because of your hard work and everyone else's too, but you guys, you're getting everyone to talk to each other, which is a good thing. Everyone in the past has had a, their own little empire, but now everybody's come under the same umbrella, and, and you can see the, making a difference. So, your team gets a lot of credit for that, by the way. They're doing great. Stan and Nancy and Doug are just outstanding people. So, thank you.
Same for me, Mike. Thanks a lot. This, Edon to me in the last, since you've been here, is a totally different animal than it was. It's really addressing the needs of the communities and really doing some proactive stuff, and I appreciate it. So, thanks for the, your hard work, Stan's hard work, your staff is great, they're all good people to work with, and we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Sorry, I...
[inaudible]
Exactly.
Working so closely together, you know all this already, Mayor.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, now, consent items 5-1, 5-2. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Speak up, system's not working.
Move to approve as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, second by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda items, consent items 5-1, 5-2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. General business, consideration and possible approval of $1,000 donation to Partners and Parks and Recreation from Sierra Chemical Company.
Mayor Martini and council members, through this agenda item...
Mayor Martini and council members, through this agenda item, we wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge and thank Sierra Chemical Company for $1,000 donation to our Partners in Parks and Recreation program. And that particular program encourages donations and volunteer assistance from the community to help support recreation programs and facilities. And we again, again, just really appreciate their support, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this item.
Questions for Andre.
I'd like a motion to accept the $1,000 donation to Partners in Parks and Recreation from Sierra Chemical Company.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the, or to accept the donation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.2, consideration and possible acceptance of a grant number A3964 from the Nell J Redfield Foundation, the amount of $50,000. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. I'm here to ask that you accept the grant we received from the Nell J Redfield Foundation in the amount of $50,000. It goes to support our Nell J Redfield Free Neighborhood Playground Program that takes place during the summer months at Ardmore Park, and it also supports our Leisure Without Limits programs for people with disabilities, a variety of programs in there, art, bowling, Mark One, Adventure Day, Teen Discovery, a lot of programs. Any questions?
Questions. Go ahead. Comments?
Just a comment first, that I just find it literally astounding that we continue to get this money, and it really speaks to both the quality of the programs being offered and the quality of the grant submissions that are being made, and the quality of the reporting that they're getting to know that their money is well-spent, because private foundations don't usually stick with programs for this long. And so I just want to commend the staff, again, on the important work that they're doing, and publicly acknowledge how lucky we are that we continue to get this money, because they're incredibly important programs. We just were having our parks planning meeting with the consultant, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and talking about the need to increase programming available to underserved populations, and that, this is our sole way to do it at this point. So again, just congratulations. I'll make a motion to accept this grant as outlined from the Nell J Redfield Foundation in the amount of $50,000 for the continuation of the Nell J Redfield Neighborhood Playground and Leisure Without Limits programs as outlined by staff, with big thanks to the Redfield Foundation for their generosity.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to accept the donation from the Redfield Foundation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Shawna. Thanks to the staff, and thanks especially to the Redfield Foundation. It's just a wonderful gesture by them, and we really appreciate it. Okay, moving on. 6.3 is a first reading.
Bill number 2649, an ordinance by the City of Sparks amending Title 20, Chapter 20.07.030 of the Sparks Municipal Code, decisions subject to review and methods of appeal, to shorten the appeal period for planning, commission, and administrative actions, and other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2649. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 11, 2013. 6.4 is a first reading.
Bill number 2650, a general ordinance providing for the rezoning of 55 parcels totaling approximately 10.8 acres in size, from IT, industrial transitional overlay, to I, industrial, and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2650. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 11, 2013. 6.5 is the first reading.
Bill number 2651, an ordinance amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to modify the expiration provisions for special use permits, Chapter 20.13, and site plan review, Chapter 20.31, and other matters properly relating thereto.
This is the first reading of bill number 2651. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 11, 2013. 6.6 is a first reading.
Bill number 2652, an ordinance amending the Sparks Municipal Code by revising provisions relating to business licenses, clarifying and strengthening numerous provisions regarding business licenses, including applications, denials, audits, inspections, delinquencies, penalties, expiration, suspension, revocation, and criminal prosecution, requiring certain tax-exempt activities to obtain a license at no cost, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for the record, working on an ordinance scheme like this, we have a tendency to start looking at the elephant through the microscope. I'd like to enter delineate an amendment to this. Everywhere you see the city manager, it will be read in its final form as he's city manager or his designee, and we're changing the finance director's position to the financial services director. So just nothing of substance, but just some minor changes on that.
Okay, thank you. This is the first reading of bill number 2652. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 11, 2013. Let's move on to 6.7, review and discussion and possible approval of a Sparks Business Visitation Program. Mr. Ornellis.
Mayor Martini, members of the city council. My name is Armando Ornellis, city planner. In this agenda item, we're presenting basically the skeleton of a business visitation program. This was, this is as follow-up to the discussion that the city council had at their workshop in November about economic development. And what we're proposing to do here is really to, again, show you an outline or a skeleton of the program. And if we receive your endorsement, then we will flush it out and really prepare to roll this out and put it into practice starting in March, is what we're proposing. The purpose of this is really to, in a nutshell, set up a regular schedule where we are going out and visiting companies that are already doing business in Sparks. So it would be, as we're proposing, a staff member accompanying an elected official. And so the idea of that is that we would ultimately help retain companies that are, that are already here in the area and potentially assist with their expansion. I think part of that is simply expressing appreciation for them being here in our community and having their businesses here. But maybe more, more to the point ultimately is to learn about what their concerns are and to develop mechanisms to try to address them. And that, in a nutshell, is what we would be trying to achieve. The steps that in the outline are in the staff report. I wanted to go through them with you briefly so that we could get any feedback that you might have today. And again, we would continue to work this and really flush it out. I think, you know, we proposed to visit 75 companies in this first year. That number is up to the city council. It could be more, it could be less. You know, obviously, the more, the higher the number, the more visits each of the elected officials would have to participate in, in a given month. Which companies we visit is something that I think we're continuing to work on. As Mike Kazimierzki alluded to in his presentation, we have sat down and discussed the Edons' efforts and how they go about it, and they've shared some, the instrument that they use in terms of the recording interviews and gathering information. They've also had some input in terms of who we visit. Staff has looked at both, you know, who the largest employers in the community are, as well as who, which companies are largest if you measure them simply on gross receipts. As you might imagine, if you look at gross receipts, you're going to have a lot of wholesalers and retailers. And, you know, I think if, just in the top 10, wholesalers or retailers comprise seven out of the top 10, 15 out of the top 25 are retailers. If you look at jobs, it's going to be more on the service side, because those are the businesses that employ, you know, the most people in general. So you have a lot of gaming enterprises, including slot ride operators, that are amongst the largest companies if you look at it that way. I think there's another aspect of this, and we need to look, to try to identify companies who are either vulnerable in terms of potentially, you know, moving their business out of Sparks, or alternatively are, you know, we have some indication that they're poised to grow. And so we would suggest that we develop a list that includes all, you know, some of all of those, and I'll come back to you with that. A second step is, or another step, is making sure that, you know, these visits are conducted in a consistent fashion so that, you know, regardless who the staff person is or who the elected official is, we're looking to gather the, you know, similar information, and that we're delivering a similar message. And then really critical is going to be making sure that we have a follow-up, follow-up mechanisms in place so that we, in fact, can, can address their concerns to the extent possible when we identify them. And so all of that will be part of what we will sit down with you on and flesh out. So that, in a nutshell, is what we're proposing to do. Again, we're looking for your input in terms of number of companies, et cetera, and then we'll prepare the full proposal.
Questions? We did this before, I did this with Tom Burris before he left, and it was, it's a great tool to really find out what's on the mind of some of the businesses and the problems they're having with the city, or the good stuff that's with the city, too. So I think this is a great tool, and it's a, it's a good idea to do. So that's for me. Questions, Mr. Smith and Mr. Lawson?
You know, not only the 75 largest companies, but I think any, maybe the new businesses in the last six months, a little follow-up to see how their experience was, starting their business, and, you know, those are the ones you want to talk to also about their future and what their plans are.
Great idea.
Mr. Lawson?
My suggestion was just the opposite. We need to look at the older companies, because they're more ripe to be wooed away. So maybe in our scoring system, when that's age or length of time they've done business in the City of Sparks, we want to tell them, thank you, because we got a brand-new company up from Mammoth that said they, in 30 years of business, they had never seen a council member, and that was one of the deciding factors for them leaving. So we got to look at that part, too. And that company is nationwide. And they're now headquartered here in the Reno area.
Yeah, you'd be surprised, I think, sometimes, how many small companies or companies that we have that we really don't, don't know about. It's probably not the first one, it'll be the last. Ms. Ratty?
Well, and I think that that, then the approach is that, because there's a little bit of everything, right? And then, so there's going to have to be some, some data set, but then also some analysis to be a bit strategic, so that it's not just a black and white, top 75. It's a, look at all the factors, and these are the one where we're going to score them up.
And certainly
Have a strategic advantage.
You know, and part of this is, you know, going to be just, you know, talking to people, and we were given some suggestions from Nancy McCormick over at Edon about the types of people, you know, working in different areas who can probably provide some insight into companies that are, you know, poised for growth or potentially vulnerable. And gathering, you know, that's, that's sort of laborious, you know, person-by-person gathering of information. But part of that is what we'll need to factor in in order to be strategic in this effort.
Councilwoman Schmidt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, that was one of the concerns that I had on the 75 largest businesses, just concentrating on that area. And I think there's, could be a combination of other things that we can do is, I think there's a place for larger businesses. I agree on the newer businesses. You know, I stopped into one today, and, you know, I spent 30 minutes with them talking about their six-month experiences and trying to get their doors opened up in the City of Sparks. And, you know, and they, since they've opened on up, they're ready to expand just about, you know, if they can get the capital to do it. So I think there's, there needs to be a combination, and maybe we don't have to, at the very beginning, be doing, going to businesses of all, maybe we can take, you know, a follow-up survey of all the businesses in the last 12 months that have entered the City of Sparks, under the heading of the mayor, the city council, and not the planning department, you know, that we're interested in talking, or you interested in talking to us. You know, we can, we can, you know, broaden the scope on up, but we don't have to develop a lot of time onto it. And if one of those businesses in the last 12 months says, yeah, I'd like to talk about my experience, that opens up the door right there, you know. I mean, if they say, yeah, we're, we're looking to expand, we want to talk to the city about what they can do to help, or, you know, what the obstacles are, that opens the door on up to that. I think, just limiting it to the large businesses, I think are not going to get the results we're looking for.
And I absolutely agree. I mean, my own thinking on this has evolved, you know, since basically I put the, put the staff report together, and based in part, again, on the conversations that Neil Crutts and I had with, with Edon staff. And so I think, to some extent, it may be that, you know, we don't even identify all 75 companies on the front end, and we leave some room to add companies, you know, as it makes sense to do so.
Yeah, and I think as we go along, some council members may have ideas of their own of who they want to visit.
And we'd like to hear that.
Throw those on the list. I'm sure Armando can take those suggestions. If there's a business that you have a passion for, or know somebody there and want to talk to them and talk to them, I think that's, that's great, too.
So at the end of the day, you know, it's basically, you know, we need to put the framework, the, you know, the instrument. We need to have everyone, you know, talking more or less from the same sheet of music. And we need to have mechanisms for follow-up. And then, you know, the other part of it is just, you know, the commitment on the part of the city that both elected officials and Sparks will dedicate this time to doing this.
So you have some Edon forms that you're going to be filling out at the same time?
They've
I know Tom used to have those, too, when we went, and we did it in conjunction for Edon and for the City of Sparks. Can we pass that on to Edon?
They have, you know, in discussing this with Nancy McCormick, initially she suggested, you know, sort of a list of topics to talk about. And then, you know, and then she said, but, you know, a lot of times, you get into that meeting, you know, you don't get very far down the list of topics. So these are the, you know, these are the half-dubbed things you really want to try to, you know, cover, and then, and then you see how it goes.
All right. So you need a motion to accept this? You got the direction, or?
Yeah, I think the direction we're looking for is, yeah, we want to, you know, having, having some better sense of what this involves, we want to go forward. So put it together and get it rolling.
Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
I want to just ask, what is the anticipated timeframe to get started?
The
I'm sorry, I should have looked at you.
The anticipated timeframe would be that we actually are ready to start conducting these visits in the month of March, and conclude the 75 or so by the holidays, so by November. 75 visits between March and November.
Okay. So then I'll go ahead and make a motion. I move to approve the Sparks Business Visitation Program as outlined by staff with the suggestions provided by council.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.78. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you, Mayor.
6.8, consideration and possible direction to city staff regarding the city's advanced planning program, including possible amendments to Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code and the Sparks Master Plan. Mr. Rundell?
Good afternoon, Jim Rundell, senior planner, here to present this item. In October and in November of last year, the Spark City Council provided direction to staff on possible code amendments to the city's municipal code, the zoning code. This was after we had hired a consulting team and worked with the development community to try to identify barriers to development in the City of Sparks. So today's item is, staff is asking for an endorsement from the council to essentially verify what was discussed at those workshops that took place. We've created three tables. The tables don't come out very well on your, on your digital format, I don't believe, so.
We'd do better if you opened the attachment.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest if you can open that PDF, we included it as the PDF, and if you open that PDF, you'll be able to see the table 1, 2, and 3. In table 1, it talks about items that the council has, has sponsored and that staff has been working on, essentially internally, without the support of an outside consulting team. Those items were all read today, or a couple of those items were read today as first reading, so the council will see those at the next meeting. Those include a change of what we call conductor heights, from being zoned with a transitional overlay to being zoned straight industrial, reducing, potentially reducing a 21-day appeal period down to 11 days. That's the proposal, anyway. And then also extending expiration dates for special use permits and site plan reviews from what's currently one year, and the proposal is to take those out to two years. The best way I can, I can see to do this presentation is actually to look at the tables on the overhead. So, this is Table 1, as I was just discussing. We just talked about the first couple of activities that the council should be reviewing at the next, at the next council meeting. At the discussions that occurred in November, or at the workshops, we also talked about amending some of the transit-oriented development standards. As the council knows, we recently removed the employment district from, from the TOD, which was a significant step. We also may be discussing other amendments to the TOD standards. The other items that the council discussed, major deviations, adding parking as a permitted use in the industrial area, amendments to the sign code, completing the master plan update, RV length of stay, and urban agriculture.
Could you, I think we have a question?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I thought the RV length of stay in RV park, we already passed that.
No, we did not. We did not pass that. It did come forward to the council in the handbook amendment. And that was an amendment to the, I can't remember the name of the handbook, but Bill Mankey's RV park is part of a, I believe it's Marina Landing, plan development.
But I thought it came, came to the council and I wasn't here, and then they wanted to include all of the RV parks, not just his.
Well, that's a right discussion, Councilman Smith. So, what happened was that was in a handbook. And what the council voted on that day was essentially to make it the same for everybody so it would affect RV parks that are not governed by a handbook.
Okay.
And essentially, that would require an amendment to the municipal code. And so, that's what we're talking about here, is an amendment to the municipal code as opposed to an amendment to the plan development handbook.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, what we just went over is Table 1. These are amendments that are in the works right now, that the council can reasonably expect to see in some time. We've also listed a priority of what we perceive the council's priority to be, based on the discussions at the two workshops. And so, what we're looking for today is if we've got something incorrect, for it to be pointed out and we can understand the council's priority.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, definitely not that you have something incorrect, I think this is a good reflection of the discussions that we've had to date. I just have another issue that I'm getting an increased number of complaints about, again. So, I had brought it up early in the process, it didn't make the list, so I'm going to make one last pitch to see if I can get it on the list, being frank about my intentions. I'm getting a number of complaints, again, about the concentration of liquor stores in the urban core. And it is, it's just the number, it's the sheer volume and how close they are to each other, and I know it's challenged by the current economy, but I'm very interested in preservation of the older neighborhoods.
Sure. There's a map. Isn't there a map that shows where they're placed? Because when I looked at the map I saw, they're fairly well-spread out, once you start looking at them on a map.
I don't know. I'm sure we could create a map. There may have been one created.
Sorry to throw you the curveball.
It's a good point, but I think there is a map that we've done.
It's been within the last year, year and a half. Yeah, in that timeframe. So, we did, we did look at the location of where alcohol is sold. You know, I think the issue that we struggled with, frankly, was, you know, establishing some sort of causality between the concentration of liquor stores and, you know, the incidence of crime specifically. So, again, if the council wants to add this to our program as a potential code amendment, then, you know, again, that's what, that's the purpose of this discussion.
And are you saying there has to be a causality to limit the, to crimes specifically?
Well, it would be, and again, we would have to go back and consult with the city attorney's office, but I think that's, that was the recommendation at the time was that, you know, it would be, it would be, we'd be on more solid ground legally, if you will, if we could point to some relationship than if we were simply looking to regulate the number of liquor stores.
And I think the challenge that I have with that, and, you know, is there's lots of jurisdictions across the country who have done this and they've figured out a way to do it and then it's stood. So, it feels to me like we should be able to do it here as well.
Well, you know, I think, I think on that note...
No, I've seen the map.
There are always to do it. I mean, some, some communities limit, you know, they have a cap on the number of stores and then, you know, they can, the licenses can be bought and sold, essentially. They become monetized, if you will. And, you know, others, you know, Reno has had their own challenges with it, but certainly we can, if that's the council's direction, then we will, we will look at that. We will put that on the, we could put that on the...
And I would go for medium. I mean, I understand it's not the top priority.
And I was, the next phase of my presentation would be to discuss Table 2. I believe that that would be an item for Table 2.
Okay.
That essentially what we're looking at with Table 2 is, is my sentiment is, okay, we don't know what we don't know, and if we can help, get help from an outside consultant, they can help us explain what other jurisdictions have done, or what they're doing, what has worked, or maybe even work they did that didn't work. And these are the, these, that's probably where I would think that item would fit best, is where we can get some other perspectives on how folks have, how municipalities have worked with such a, with that concept. The other, the other items that we have on there is a new master table of permitted uses. Currently, our TOD actually has a pretty slick deal. You flip to one page, it'll tell you all the different permitted uses in the different, in the different zoning districts. You don't have to, whereas if you go to the zoning code, you want to know what's permitted in C1, C2, tourist commercial. You have to go to different pages in the municipal code for all of those different, different uses. This, this concept would be a master table. As the council is very aware, we have permitted uses and we have definitions with those uses. Sometimes we get a use in, the planner may very well think that it's appropriate for the zoning district, but because the way the use is defined, or not defined, we can't find a way to make it work. And then, we have to come back to the council, ask for code amendments, and those things take time. So, essentially, the concept is to get outside consulting help to reconsider the definition section of the municipal code. Continuing on with concept of Table 2, requiring outside consulting help, reconsider what uses require special use permits, potentially reducing them, as we did in the industrial district a couple of years ago. Reconsider where uses are appropriate and potentially allow for permitted uses to be in other zoning districts that they're currently not allowed. And then, a medium priority. If, if we do move forward with receiving outside consulting help and essentially redo the zoning code, it may be helpful for, for a citizen or a developer to have a manual, a couple-page manual, three or four pages on how to quickly find things in the code. Table 3, our concepts that were discussed through the zoning analysis that the Clarion and team gave to the city council, that we discussed at the workshops. But we understand that the council, at this time, is not ready to move forward with, with these concepts. Essentially, we understand, staff understands, that to leave the auto-oriented policy along prater and victorian alone, currently, things such as auto sales, auto repair shops are not permitted uses. There are some uses along there that are grandfathered in, but in the current zoning, they are not, they are not allowed. And from our understanding, the council wants to move forward with that direction. Of the alternative compliance tool, that was a concept that was discussed, essentially would allow, would allow a significant amount of flexibility in the code. What's, an example would be, we can't meet all of the setbacks, but instead of meeting the setbacks, we'll put in a lot of landscaping in the front. That becomes a lot of discretion and the code becomes very gray. And from what we understood, the council was a little bit concerned with, with staff getting in, in the place where they could be setting a policy to an extent. And as I, as I said, this is just how staff perceived the discussions, and we're trying to verify, verify these. At some point, industrial design standards, we don't have them in our design standards manual right now. We, to an extent, use the commercial design standards when we construct new buildings down there. From what we understood, it wasn't that important of an item for the city council to work on at this, this time. And then, the last, the last two were review the parking standards and amend the landscape Staff will, of course, look at all of these things, but when brought up at the workshops was our understanding that they weren't the highest of priority to the city council. And so, as I explained, the staff is looking for essentially the council to endorse this list. Ultimately, as the staff report explained, we hope to come back in June with the creation of a contract to go out to hire a, a planning consulting team to help us come in and, and move forward with all of the items and more that are on this list. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Rundle? Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Here are the last five items that we're not going to work and necessarily have to work on, such as the landscaping requirement. So, we had anything, any projects in the last couple of years that's been a big issue on? I know we had Now Foods, but that was because of the tourist thing. We got that resolved by pulling that out of the tourist thing, but I mean, it's just in general, landscaping design, a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I would say not a major problem. There's a couple of minor things that we've been able to work out. Ultimately, we, we should probably have a landscaping ordinance that considers things such as zero-scaping or, you know, alternative landscaping, potentially a little bit lower landscaping requirement for the industrial area, things like that, that may need to be considered. But as, as for an overhaul to the landscaping ordinance, I don't think that, that's probably necessary at this time.
Then, in your deviation plan, can, is, those are things that you can put in the deviation plan?
Yeah.
Because I would think that we would be into water conservation and want to promote that type of landscaping, but if we, if we can't by policy allow it to happen...
And, and like I said, if the council thinks that potentially we should move the landscaping standards, reviewing those up to a higher priority, that's why we're here today.
I'm not necessarily asking to move it to higher priority, I'm just looking to see is that's something that's, would potentially keep a project from going forward? That's just the only question I have. And it doesn't sound like it's that big of a deal, but...
I don't think it would, easy for me to say, but I don't think it would inhibit someone from moving forward, but it could create two meetings with staff as opposed to one.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Smith?
You know, on the landscaping part, I don't know if it should be high, but, you know, I've always talked about future development, housing tracks, or whatever, we'll get back to that, that we should look at zero-scape as opposed to lawns because of the amount of water that it, that it requires.
Okay.
If we move on with this today, Jim, when we, you bring it back, you're going to bring it back again, right?
Well, essentially, we would be bringing, when we come back the next time, it would be hopefully with amendments that, that you've directed us to do. We would bring back the, the contract for council to approve, to ultimately go out to get a team, but we wouldn't necessarily bring another matrix back that outlines the work program. Of course, at any time, you know, we can, can be re-discussed, but our plan wasn't to bring this back as a whole.
Okay. I can live with that for now.
So, if we're having, having a problem with one of these lower priority deals, a councilman can bring something back to you and we can move the priority up and start looking at it, can we not?
Sure.
I think that's what Ron is worried about.
Yeah. I may not agree with everything in here, then that's something that, if I wanted to make the motion or something, then I would not include that.
Sure. That, that's right, if...
I don't see anything in here now.
Yeah, but things can change, sure. Things we haven't put on the list that we didn't discuss, those can come up. Or, as the council knows, sometimes we get working on these things, we get into them a little bit deeper, and then we find other items that may need to be reconsidered.
Thank you.
That's when we'll have to revisit it.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll give you a motion.
Mr. Smith?
I move to endorse the work program as outlined by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve Agenda Item 6.8. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Good job, as usual. Okay, next is comments from the city council and city manager. Next is comments from the public. Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the Order of Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for January 28, 2013. With a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the public comment. Anybody like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring... Come on forward, sir.
To my earlier comments?
Come on down, sir.
Thank you.
And then, if we have you fill out a card when you're done.
Sure.
Okay.
Just add to my earlier comments about the Advisory Committee for the Disabled. I was just over at Northland Nevada Center for Independent Living, and they think that it's a great idea that we should have that, and they're going to post it on their volunteer board, asking for volunteers. So, I gave them my information, I gave them Chris Iverson's information, and we'll see how many people we can recruit and how fast. I'd also like to ask where the meetings were being held. Do they have to be here in this building or, because they offered their conference room for, for the meetings.
We can discuss that. Doesn't necessarily have to be here.
Cool.
I think they've moved them around in the past also.
Yeah. So, anyway, I just thought I'd let you know that I've been working on it, and I hope that we can bring this to a reality. Thank you.
As a side note, just as one recommendation, one of the problems they had, I think, Ed, was finding somebody to be in charge, to be the chairman of the committee, so make sure if you're going to bring this forward...
And the secretary.
Yeah, that you have people that want to volunteer to be president, secretary, treasurer, and all that good stuff, so. And vice president or vice chair.
Okay. On that note, I have served as president of the Board of Directors for homeowners association. I have served as president of my lodge. I've served as treasurer of the homeowners association. I've served as treasurer for a regional nonprofit organization, so I have plenty of board experience myself.
Not, I'm not saying that you don't. Just be prepared, if you're going to do this, make sure you got people to volunteer.
So, I know who to look for.
Yeah, it takes more than just you.
Exactly. And I refuse to do it all myself.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And that was, that was part of the problem before, because I know it takes quite a bit of staff time also to put these meetings together and to attend the meetings.
I am retired, so I have plenty of time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in public like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Did you get the motions? Okay, seeing none, please vote. All, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Okay, 3.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of December 10, 2012.
Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of December the 10th, 2012. Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period November 22nd, 2012, to January 9th, 2013. Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Comments? Comments from the agency? Anybody in the, in the agency want to make a comment? Okay, I'll open it up to the public again. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Seeing no more comments, we are adjourned.